Good evening. The Board now reconvenes this meeting of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees in open session at 7 o'clock PM on October 4th, 2016, at the Plano ISD Administration Building. I'm Ms. Yvonne Bender, President of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees. On the Board's behalf, I wish to extend a warm welcome to all who are present and to our web and video viewers. Does this sound any funny to you?
Yeah.
Let me push it back. Is that better? No? This better? Can you hear me now? Okay. We will conduct our meeting focusing on the district's two major goals: ensuring the continued improvement in student learning and ensuring the efficient use of resources. Let me introduce my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my left are Dr. Brian Ben-Grae, Superintendent of Schools; Nancy Humphrey, Board Vice President; Trustees Tammy Richards and David Stahle; Susan Modisette, Assistant Superintendent for Campus Services; Dr. Matthew Gutierrez, Assistant Superintendent for Employee Services; and Dr. Jim Wusso, Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services. Seated to my right are Carolyn Mobius, Board Secretary; Trustees Marilyn Hinton and Dr. Jorm Solomon; Dr. Keri Cooper, Assistant Superintendent for District Services; Steve Fortenberry; Chief Financial Officer, Dan Armstrong; Assistant Superintendent for Technology Services, Carla Oliver; Assistant Superintendent for Government, Community, and Planning Initiatives; and Denise Glasby, Executive Assistant New Superintendent of Board of Trustees. That's a lot of words. I'd like to thank members of our Purchasing Services Department for serving as greeters tonight and for distributing the agendas and comment cards. Please join us in applauding these staff members for their assistance this evening. Thank you. At this time, Carolyn Mobius will share an inspirational message.
It is my hope that we can take inspiration from Dr. H. Wayne Hendrick, the Plano ISD Superintendent from 1961 to 1991. His recent passing gives us a unique opportunity to ponder upon his leadership, pride in public education, and his lifelong commitment to the Plano ISD community as a citizen, educator, and forever football fan. We will miss him.
Thank you, Carolyn. I'd like to take a moment to share with our live and at-home audiences a tribute to Dr. Hendrick at this time.
I did spend 42 years as a teacher, a principal, and student in school. I've spent a lot of time out in the schools. In fact, I was out in the schools more than I was in my office. I took birthday cards to make me get out there so that I could see what was going on without them thinking that I came to evaluate them. I came to bring them a birthday card to say we appreciate what you've done with children. There's a program for every child academically; there's a program for every child in extracurricular programs. And that's what we were after. It's out there. Happy to you and all that you went through during that time. This community is truly grateful. It'll work. It'll work.
We're very honored to have had his leadership in this district. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We now move to the recognition part of the agenda. Carla, do we have any student guests to be recognized this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Although they might not be with us in the room tonight, at this time, the Board would like to recognize the fact that 121 of our senior high school students have captured semifinalist standing in the 2017 National Merit Scholarship Program. You may have noticed the names of these students scrolling on the screens in this board room prior to the start of this meeting. Plano ISD joins with the National Merit Scholarship Corporation in recognizing these 121 semifinalists. These Plano ISD students are among 16,000 academically talented students who have an opportunity to continue now in the competition for 7,500 National Merit Scholarships worth approximately $33 million to be awarded next year. About 1.6 million juniors entered the 2017 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2015 preliminary SAT. That is the initial screen of program entrance. The nationwide pool of semifinalists representing less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors includes the highest-scoring entrants in each state. To be considered for a National Merit Scholarship, semifinalists must fulfill academic and application requirements to advance to the finalist level of competition. Of the estimated 90% of the semifinalists who achieve finalist standing, approximately one-half will win a National Merit Scholarship, earning the Merit Scholar title. The Plano ISD Board of Trustees salutes these 121 seniors and wishes them all the best as they pursue finalist standing. Although they are not with us this evening, I invite the Board and audience to join me in a round of applause for these outstanding students. Next on our agenda is the regular public comment portion. For the public comment portion of the agenda, the Board has public comment cards that are accepted from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Cards are not accepted after 7:00 PM and are not transferable to any other parties or speakers. All cards will be collected and given to Carla Oliver or a representative of the Communications Department who will present the speakers during this time. Ms. Oliver, do we have any speakers for public comments?
No, we don't. I will let you know that we did have a student group come in.
Okay.
That there's an opportunity to recognize them.
Okay. So it looks like we might have a Boy Scout troop.
We do, in fact. Would Troop 235 please stand to be recognized? Thank you for being here.
Welcome. Thank you for being here. Okay, so with... Do we have any non-agenda public comment cards? None? Okay. So we will move on to the next item, which is going to be the Consent Agenda. I'm going to steal a drink. The Consent Agenda includes personnel recommendations, minutes of previous meetings, bids, purchases, and construction items. Are there any requests to remove an item or items from the Consent Agenda for any further discussion? Here, none. May I have a motion and followed by a second to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Carla, I believe there is an individual that you might like to introduce this evening.
I would. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to introduce Kristen Alexander, if you'd like to stand. With your vote tonight, Kristen becomes our Director of Development for Plano ISD and with the leadership of the Education Foundation. So we're so glad to have you with us tonight and to introduce you to our Board.
Now we will move into the Items for Discussion and Action. First item is our Legislative Priorities. The Board will discuss the Plano ISD Legislative Priorities. In June of this year, a subcommittee of three board members was formed to consider developing the priorities for the 85th Legislative Session, which starts in January. The Plano ISD Legislative Priorities are derived from inclusive conversation among trustees and district administration. Additionally, in common legislative priorities are considered upon collaboration with peer You've all seen these priorities included in your packet. Can I first entertain a motion, followed for consideration by a second, and then we'll have some discussion following that? Do I have a motion? Do I accept?
I move that we accept the legislative priorities that's set forth in our agenda packet.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
I have a few comments. One of them, I'll just go one by one. In Item 1, the idea is great. What I worry about, I'm thinking about a scenario in which we have set the tax rate, and then, not for one or two or three years, but maybe 20 years, we kept on reducing tax rates, and all of a sudden, 20 years later, we're going back to a rate that was true 20 years ago. So I would suggest that maybe we put a limit on how many years back, so we can go back to a tax rate that we had up to, I don't know, five years ago, six years ago, or something like that, instead of just keeping it... What I'm thinking is, we're going to somehow affect the Board that's going to be two, three terms from now if we don't put a cap. Or we don't let tie to maybe four, five, eight years ago.
I think that when we put this one together, I think we intentionally left out that window because we figured that when we spoke with a legislator who might consider supporting this bill, then they would put that window in because it's a little hard for us to specify in this... This is more of a...
Framework.
Yeah, framework, exactly. So that's...
This was also... A bill was filed in the last legislative session to address this, and if I recall correctly, in that bill, there was a five-year window built in, I think. Is that right? Do you all remember that?
I believe it was.
Yeah, so I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you, and I think that was part of the intent of the legislator who filed the original bill. And I understand that that same bill will be filed again. And so, that's... They're thinking of a cap already? I don't necessarily know that we need to think of that or ask for it, but I certainly understand and appreciate the comment.
Yeah, so, you know, that's not causing me significant heartburn. In Item 3, I suppose... We'll get it. In Item 3, have we thought about adding family, not just early childhood, pre-K education, but also family support?
Can you show us where you're talking about?
Item 3, when we talk about support early childhood, we're talking about programs serving students from at-risk population and so on. How about their families? If we should have some... We have our own center for that, but should we support that as part of the legislative priorities?
Well, it's a good idea, but I'm afraid that the legislature isn't going to give us funding for anything but enrollment.
So are you thinking... I mean, there are two sides to this. One is the legislative actions, and one is our operational actions.
Right.
So operationally, we definitely have control over that, and we do that, for sure. I'm trying to reconcile the two. You know, whether... Because from a... We know what the governor's priority is, which is called early childhood, you know, education. Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I appreciate that, and I kind of agree with what President Bender said. Certainly, we can consider that operationally, but I would also throw this out having recently visited a couple and with the realization that these are children who... Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but for the most part, they're not even reduced lunch. These are free lunch students, so their families are, you know, have a deeper level of poverty to be there. And by that, this is a tremendous service for those families, and kind of fully came to appreciate how much this was an opportunity for the family as well as the child, and just even what we're doing now. So there is, really is a piece of that in there, I think.
Let me offer something of support for that idea. You know, I think perhaps we could look into whether there are other legislative actions that are outside of the scope of education that we could still support. You know, if there's a... If some sort of family services legislation that is being proposed, that's certainly something we could support and espouse as to put official support of it. You know, maybe that's something to look into, and we could later amend these priorities to address that. I think that's a good idea, though, because it does tie the two things together: early childhood, education, and family support for those who need it.
I'm trying to remember, because it's been a couple of years since I read Greg Abbott's plan, but for some reason, I was thinking that something is in there that incorporates, you know, like our Family Lyracy Center, you know, that does incorporate having that support for parents, but I just don't... I don't remember. I've read it lately.
Yeah, and to be clear, too, the idea here was to support the Governor Abbott's plan and further that. I think what I'm taking from your commentary is something that would be supportive of it, but put it all together different. So I think it's worth, you know, looking into, certainly.
It's beyond. It's something that we know is helping, and maybe that's something we should push for. In Section 5, Items 3 and 4, I'll start with the easy ones, Items 3 and 4. Should we be going into that level of detail, or maybe we should stay at the higher level of concept?
So on Item 3, like sentence number one?
We're talking about from six pennies to eight pennies, the golden pennies. We're talking about the enrichment taxes above six cents. So the question is, if we're going in too much detail as opposed to maybe just say, what are we trying to achieve instead? I mean, maybe there is another formula, maybe a change in the formula altogether?
Well, I think that we addressed that somewhat in Item Number 1, Paragraph 2, and we were hoping that they will modernize those property wealth weights.
Right.
And that would help take care... But from six to eight pennies is rather specific. You're right. I think that's just where we've been... We've carried this same priority in the past and used the same measurement. And I might throw a question to Mr. Fortenberry. Do we have any kind of logic behind the two pennies? Is there some... Because I know that we're comparing that to the Austin Yield, and it shields us from two pennies more of recapture on the $1.17 M&amp;O. But is there a reason that we went with the two pennies?
I don't know specifically. I do know that in, I think, two sessions ago and possibly in the last session, there was a bill to do that, and so it was probably the thought of just taking another run at that.
Okay, because I know we carried the same priority in the last session.
Again, my point is really only procedural. If we're going into too deep a level of detail as opposed to just stay at the level that we have in Level 1, again, I don't have a heartburn over that.
You know, I think what you're seeing, too, though, relative to the testimony that certain members of the Board have done in the past few days, I think you're starting to see a shift more towards the second paragraph in Number 1 as opposed to being the primary financing argument as opposed to these specific arguments. And so, you know, I wouldn't necessarily have heartburn about taking out the specificity of two pennies, because I think what we're asking for is an overhaul of the system.
That's right.
Right. So you could just say increased level of enrichment, maybe, or just take out three?
Something like that. I just... We want them to overhaul this.
Yes.
We don't want property taxes to be used the way that they are now.
Correct. And so if we omitted three and four from the funding-related priorities and maybe put more specific... I don't know if we need more specific language, but we want to emphasize Paragraph 2, because that's really the key, is if they haven't updated those property wealth values, that's what's killing us on recapture.
That's right.
Because we're giving back 50% for the last 11 pennies on the tax rate.
Right.
50%.
Okay, so am I hearing omit three and four? I'm fine with that. Okay, good.
Which brings me to where I do have heartburn, and that would be number two there. And you know where I stand on this. I don't think that we should be a monopoly. I think, you know, the scenario that comes to mind right now is imagine if, for some reason, we can't keep a good quality of any of our schools. And one of the things that I never thought about until now is that kids would want to get out of a school if we can't keep the quality. However, kids from families that are, I'll call it, advantaged or affluent, they will have the money to take their kids out of their school, and it's the economically disadvantaged kids that cannot. We don't let them have any mechanism that would allow them to take their kids out of that school and put them in any other school. One of the things, and I brought this in the past, last year when we went through this, I would not be in favor of taking vouchers and giving them to schools that don't, are not being held to the same criteria that we're being held to. So we're held to a certain criteria. If you want to have vouchers, if you want to take your money, the money that was... And it doesn't have to be 100%, and there are different formulas and different models for this. Take it and take your kid to a school that does satisfy what you need. If we can't do that... I'm very confident that in PISD, we will be able. We do have the right teachers and the right principals and everyone to keep the level of schools, but if we don't, we are causing a divide, because kids with... From families with money will be able to take them out, and kids from families without will not. I really don't want us to have... Or at least to refine our position that says, no vouchers unless it's for a school that is being held to the same standards that we are.
Or if it's vouchers only for the schools that are not performing.
Add that, too. Add that, too.
I just... I don't know. My opinion is to leave it as it is.
Yeah, I mean, I think my position on this is well-known, at least amongst the seven of us board members as well. This is where, Jorm, you and I disagree probably the greatest on any issue. I don't at all want to open the door for vouchers. I think that taking state funds and putting them into private use, A, I think, is a violation of the Texas Constitution. There's a Supreme Court case currently that will decide if similar language in another state is constitutional or not under the U.S. Constitution. But beyond that, I think that taking public dollars and putting them into private schooling is not the proper use of those public funds. And so I disagree, and I would want to keep this as an absolute statement that we oppose vouchers in any form.
Here's where I'm coming from. I have to ask myself, do we represent the students who are currently in PISD or the students that can be in PISD? And I think that we represent the latter. We represent all students that can be in PISD, including those that can't find our schools or any of our schools, or can't find a program that they want to have, and there is another school that does provide that program. And we don't have any intention to offer a very specific program. Why not let them take them out? Why hold them?
There are financial mechanics around that, and that is an additional cost to the entire system. So if children... So the deal that is being discussed now is not a voucher, it's an education savings grant. And there is no accountability and no transparency associated with that right now. So the mechanism that you're describing doesn't exist in that form. But the form it does exist in is called a charter school. And any child has the ability to opt-in to attend a charter school, and there is transparency and accountability for the use of public funds in those mechanisms. I represent Plano ISD. I don't represent other school districts. And in Plano ISD, I believe that we have choices where students can transfer between schools if they so choose. They could go to a charter school, and that is still a transparent use of public funds. For the children who are currently in private school, who you're describing now, there is no financial mechanism in the system today. We are not compensated for them. So if such a system were to occur, then the value associated with that student isn't funded to us now. So that's an incremental cost to the entire system, to now take a funding and give it to them and let them use it for whatever choice they have. So that's a revenue... That's a whole additional cost to the system, and there is not going to be... There isn't any transparency associated with that. I'm sorry, but I'm in a different camp on this issue.
That's fine, but the fact that there is no system right now that allows... That has the accountability and transparency...
Charter schools do. Charter schools do.
Okay, other than charter schools.
So if a child is in a private school and they want a different... Or they're in a public school and they want a different choice, they have that ability to make such a choice. They could even go to Grand Prairie, where they have open enrollment, and, you know, take one of their choice programs. I believe there are choices. Is every choice under the sun available? Probably not, but there are options, and I'm just in a different place.
My point is that instead of just having a blanket statement that says, "We're going to oppose this," period, and then call it a mechanism to privatize private education, how about if we define what are the boundaries of under which we're not going to oppose? So I'm okay with the wording being, "We're going to oppose it unless..." Or, "We're going to oppose it if schools don't meet the same accountability and the same transparency requirements to the system." And if they don't, and if it does not... You brought a point of adding cost to the system, and if it does not add cost to the system. I just don't want it to be a blanket statement.
Well, you're asking us to negotiate against ourselves.
You what?
You're asking us to negotiate against ourselves, because this Board has a history of an absolute prohibition on vouchers. And so if they're... What you're asking us to do is then say, "Well, we know you oppose vouchers, and we had this conversation in the spring in a workshop," in that we oppose vouchers, except here's some ideas that maybe we'll be okay, comfortable with. We shouldn't be the ones proposing that. We're opposed to these vouchers. If somebody else wants to propose a system, that's fine, but I'm not going to negotiate against myself and start throwing out ideas that would be acceptable to me, to let somebody else cherry pick that and say, "Well, you said you would do this." A. B. I stand by this statement. I'm opposed to vouchers. I'm opposed to privatizing the public system, period.
I would just like to ask that if, for some reason, it appears that's going to be passed by the state, I would like us to have some good talking points that we should have readily available, and not just say, "We're opposed to this." I think we need to have a more meaningful dialogue, all the disadvantages that it can create with public ed. You know, I'm opposed to it as what I know... As what I have been told by legislators when I asked them, you know, "Okay, you're going to do this, you're just going to throw taxpayers' money at whatever, and you're not going to ask for any accountability?" I'm sorry. That is totally fiscally ir... I'm sorry. That is totally fiscally irresponsible, period, regardless if it's in line with the constitutional or not. It is fiscally irresponsible to not have any accountability. So...
I agree with you. I agree with you. What I'm saying is, let's say, we will oppose it or we will not oppose it unless there is an accountability and transparency and now no added costs or whatever we decide the boundary. Here is what I'm afraid. At some point, this is going to happen, and if this is going to happen, it's going to happen, and not at our terms, not at, it might not have the accountability. We may be giving them, here is the way to do, the way to do that is only if you enforce accountability and transparency, held them to the same standard. But at that point, you let a kid that we cannot provide an option to get another option.
Right now, I want to help them with, use our people to help them figure out a better financing, you know, a better way to finance public education. That's where I want to put all my eggs at this point. And I do, I understand your saying, Jorn, but I support this statement as it is for now.
I appreciate your passion on this issue, but I don't think you're going to sway enough people to change it.
I was going to say, called a question.
So, any other comments about six and seven?
Not for me. Not because I decided not to. I just didn't have any of them.
Okay. All right. So, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Would you clarify, all in favor would be changes made to omit items?
Thank you. As, all in favor of the presentation as modified. Thank you. Please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the discussion of pre-K through second grade academy guiding principles and timeline. In June 2016, a subcommittee of three board members was formed to explore elementary school academies. Using a process outlined by staff and approved by the board, the committee seeks the board's approval of the outlined guiding principles. Included is the, also a proposed process and suggested timeline. For, this is just my commentary, for, let's take a look, a second here. Okay. So, the committee is seeking the board's approval of those items, principles, process, and timeline. Since we reviewed this at our last session, I'll entertain a motion and a second, and then we'll have discussion, just like we did before. Okay? So, do I have a motion to approve as presented? So moved. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
So, I think this, the doc, I think this looks a lot more like what the other subcommittee did and kind of what I was expecting to see. So, I appreciate y'all going back and doing that. I guess my one comment and my one big hangup I have right now with this is I think we ought to break these up into two things. The issue, the overview, the guiding principles as one item, and the proposed process and timeline as a second item. Because as I read the process and timeline, I think that's more of a specific instruction to seating a committee as opposed to the guiding principles of any committee or multiple committees that we would, we would see. At least that's my thought in terms of just this initial read-through, and I, because I know that y'all are ready to keep going and get some, get a committee seated and instructions given. But I think these are two separate issues.
Of course, I see them a little more connected and actually something that, as we were working through the process, there may be a clarification that we might want to add to the document, and that's really to add statements that outline the breadth of our intentions and really indicate our longstanding desire to develop systemic solutions. And so, what I would suggest that we consider under the overview of the approach, the intention paragraph doesn't change. We talked about wanting to serve foundational needs. And then a statement that I might suggest is, you talk about underlying factors that are causing this movement. So, the underlying factors contributing to the opportunity gap include economic disadvantage, high mobility, and English language acquisition. Pre-K through second grade academies will directly target these factors and develop unique systems to respond and counteract these impediments to academic success. We then might expand into the guiding principles, a concluding bullet that says, at the broadest level, those are the ones I'm talking about, "We want to consider a school that consists of a system of academic design that targets the specific underlying factor or factors contributing to the opportunity gap." I think this broadens the topic about as broad as it can be and solve the problem. And I think the proposed process and timeline, we were asked to bring one forth, and so that's what we've done. And I think it certainly indicates the study direction in concert with how we brought other academies to bear in our district, following exactly the process that was used for the Plano Academy High School.
Dave, why are you wanting to separate the kids?
I'm sorry.
I was asking David why you wanted to separate them.
Because as I see this, the guiding principles are something that's more aligned towards a document that can be used for one academy or 10 academies. You take these guiding principles and you can reapply them across the board to other present, other focus. And then specifically with the proposed process and timelines, I mean, that's when you narrowly, y'all kind of narrowly specify what it is you actually want, which is an academy in the southwest quadrant. I think that's, I think those are two separate issues in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. At least that's how I see the other set, the other set of guidelines as well.
Well, I think certainly as you look at the proposed process and timeline under the part that specifically says process, that is taken pretty much verbatim from what they use for the Plano Academy High School, a committee of community leaders. And then when you read under several specific areas recommended by the committee to examine, include program of study, technology, those are the exact same bullets that were used to approve the Plano Academy High School back in April of 2011. So, it's really following the process we've used. I guess I need to understand, what more data do we need to move forward?
I think one of the questions we need to ask ourselves is, the purpose of our work as two subcommittees was to create guidelines that then administration would be able to create a plan based on. So, I think what we need to ask ourselves is, does this satisfy that need? I think that there are guidelines here and...
Well, and it does say proposed process, so it doesn't, you know, the committee may disagree with the board's subcommittee's thoughts, but I think, you know, going back to, originally back to June or whichever month it was, I mean, we really thought that we did exactly what was being asked for. To me, it was beyond the guiding principles. If we, you know, if we were aware that it was really just that focus, we wouldn't have probably had the, was it 16 meeting, or all the meetings we had and all the time invested in researching, you know, different studies to support where the information we received from data through, I mean, data, the data from Dash, oh my gosh, I've been watching Star Trek too much lately, from Dash, you know, where it was pushing us to look, you know, forward to with the next, well, with the next, with our first academy. So... And as we discussed earlier, I know originally we're, you know, it was the pre-K through eighth grade, but oh my gosh, you can't, there's no way. It had to be divided up. There's just no way. There's too many different skill sets that the kids have to accomplish and too different. So, no apologies made.
I think that we took some time and talked with a lot of the administrators in putting this together so that they have, you know, a picture of where we're going with this and how we're doing it. So, with that, we tried to improve it during the process.
And I don't have a heartburn. I already had my heartburn today. I don't have a heartburn over the fact that we're all split it into K through second and third through eighth. I think they are different animals, and we will need to do something for three to eight, and probably that piece of work is open. But I don't have a problem.
I guess I'll just share my desire, and it's kind of reflective of some of the additional commentary that Tammy suggested. I know you guys were focused on a location, a school. I'm very interested in all, you know, I know you are too, addressing all needs where they exist. If what you're talking about here is tailored toward the highly mobile solution, you know, helping students of high mobility, I'm also curious to know what can we discover and do for the other challenges that we face. So, I understand your point of view. I'm just a little broader also.
And I certainly can understand that, and I think these statements really indicate that intention. I think we've got some new learnings from the data that Dash provided us that may give us some insight in terms of what's truly happening, so we may know how to respond to the different challenges, whether it's language acquisition, whether it's almost what I'm considering, hypermobility, and what do we need to do? How can we be thoughtful and creative and dream big about helping the children that reside in our district?
So, are you guys following, you know, the process of seating a committee and such? I kind of look at these two similarly fashioned where we would have a high school committee, we'd have a committee over here. Both are given, you know, tasks to do. They're both going to reflect on work that's been done to date, but also bringing into their scope other work that maybe has not been done to date. So, there's no telling exactly where both of these might go, right? So, I just want to make sure that we're all okay with that by giving them direction and letting them go work, and then come back and share what they've discovered.
I do think, you know, just with the experience with the Plano Academy Visioning Committee, I think that that really worked out really well. And with the community input, the committee's input, it was a nice mixture of people. So, you would, you know, the teachers got to hear concerns about, from parents and businesses. It just, I think it's how we should be trying to work putting together other academies or, you know, some big project that we might be thinking about. I think it's very good.
So, let me ask this question then, because it sounds like, you know, we're going, that what is being proposed is just one approval here, and that we're, I don't think I'm having support to split these into two items, but then are we as a board saying that this process is going to be, here are the guiding principles, we're going to see a subcommittee, and here's what we think you ought to do? Because it seems to me that that's what this says. This says, "We think you ought put a K through two academy in the southwest quadrant." Feel free to disagree with us if you want, but here's what we just approved at the table, and it's what the board suggests you do. Is that what we're talking about? Because I think, to me, that's a completely separate conversation. This is where I was going with this, is that that's a separate conversation from guidelines. Guidelines are one thing, a specific focus is another, and that's a larger conversation for the seven of us to have. So, are we all comfortable with what's about to happen?
I think certainly as we task committees in the community, I want to make sure that they know the problem we're wanting to solve. And so, I want to make sure that we're providing meat and vegetables to kids before we provide dessert to other kids. And so, there are lots of cool academies out there, and we can have all kinds of cool elementary academies, but we wouldn't be solving some very serious underlying needs in our community. So, I think it's important for the Citizens Committee to know where we want to start. We want to start with some of these systemic needs that, as a district, we've not addressed. In fact, we've scarcely acknowledged. And so, that's where we need to start first.
And I think that's true for the whole country, you know, that all of these problems that we're trying to deal with, even in the guiding principles or where we take this, you know, is something that the whole country is trying to grapple with. And so, we come together and really try and say, "Well, what's good at Plano? You know, what do we need at Plano to make this, you know, productive?" And so, it's really tailored towards our district more than anything else.
Now, I'm looking at the guiding principles right now, and as I read them, let's, if you don't mind, let's take a look. I'm seeing on page 132 some broad comments of guiding principles. And then on page 133...
Specifics.
Well, but they're not specific on this page to me that say it has to be here, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like till the last paragraph.
The first rule of point talks about standalone location.
Well, is it strongly considered?
Considered. It doesn't say.
Must.
Just it says, I mean, there's right there. So, if, I mean, in my mind, I'm looking at those statements stated.
I agree. I think those, I think all the guiding principles are very well-minded, yeah.
And then the other description in the proposed process and timeline, that's where you were going, right?
Correct. That's why, that's why my original suggestion was that these are two separate items.
So, just my, as I'm looking at this, that to me is background knowledge, maybe, but I don't, I'm not interpreting that to be, "You must do these things," or "You must."
Under the proposed timeline? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, because it's proposed process and timeline. It's...
The very last sentence is, the Senator, it's...
Oh, strongly recommended.
Strongly recommended that the first elementary academy should be designed to serve the needs of students in the southwest quadrant of the district area. I mean, that's a very specific, strong recommendation from the board. And so, I just want to make sure that we, as a group of seven, are comfortable to say, "We're going to approve this, and that's going to include language that says, 'We recommend this.'"
Yeah.
That's specific action.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Well, if I recall back in 2010, 2011, the process that we went through for the findings and directions, outcomes from the process of the academy visioning work, that committee actually visited various examples of schools that are possible to consider for the location that we created. And I can see how this proposal could be giving an example of what, you know, you could consider this. I mean, and then you've specified it out. But perhaps that might be outside of this document because this document is supposed to lead the process for any future K through eighth academy. But I don't have a problem with giving that direction or that example to the committee for their consideration because it quite squarely meets the needs that are outlined in the issue, approach, and guiding principles. So, perhaps to David's point, if we just take out that one sentence with the understanding that that information, that example can be given to the committee, then you've got a document that is more of a framework for the academy programs.
I think we need to be, I don't know, a little more specific in our suggestion because if we come back with a suggestion to do a STEM academy to teach kids how to code in our affluent areas, then we won't be serving children. I think, I think it gives them the direction which way you should, where you should start looking, where we want to spend our first monies if we're going to do such an academy.
And I, I do think that this, I understand that y'all want it general, but again, with pre-K through second grade, we know there's, you know, a variety of things that could be tackled. And one of them is the mobility and the low socioeconomic kiddos. But if I want, if a subcommittee wanted to suggest, hey, we should have coding in pre-K through second grade, that this isn't going to fit it. I mean, we have to make it so general that there is no guidance.
Well, because you outlined pretty specifically about the needs.
Yeah.
That we're trying to be, coding is not going to meet that.
No. Well, except for second math, but no, it's not going to meet the need.
It looks like the first page, it looks like the first page is really the guidelines. This is the high level and I think that it captures what you're trying to achieve. And I think that what I would say is, after all, what are we expecting to do tonight with both academy proposals? I think what we're going to do is say, these are our guiding principles. If you remember, that was a few meetings ago, we had a document and there were four steps of what the administration is going to do with each one of the academies. And we added step zero, which is, we're going to give the guidelines. And it looks like the first page is those guidelines. And what we need to do now is hand this, unless we don't agree with the things on that first page, but hand this over to the administration and say, we need a plan. We need a proposal that meets those guidelines. And feel free to use everything that we have in the next pages as suggestions, as ideas, as background. But really, you need to meet that first, the guidelines in the first page.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay.
What was the question?
Can I ask a question?
I just want to, because there's strongly suggested and suggested. We've got a suggested timeline that has us hiring an architect in two months. So, I just want to make sure that's also an understanding here. When we talk about levels of specificity, we're going to really need to talk fast.
Talking about hiring an architect for an art center.
That's true.
And again, it's under proposed. I mean, I don't know if y'all, it's not, we're not saying this is the process and the timeline. I mean, goodness gracious, who knows what the committee will turn up for us? It might be, you know, other factors that we didn't consider or they might be able to scale reaching out to these students in a different way. But we're, well, y'all know, we're ready to get moving on this. It's been quite a while where, or quite a while, there hasn't been any kind of, that I'm aware of any attention to, highly mobile students and trying to figure out a way to deliver some more needed services. And yes, we did think a standalone place would be a good thing because it doesn't have to have boundaries associated with it. So, you know, and it's something new, so.
Okay, so the question has been called. I'm trying to decide how to exactly do this because we've had lots of suggestions about taking, looking at something differently, one way or another. Does anybody want to make an amendment to the original motion, which was to adopt the guiding principles, the proposed process and timelines?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment, which would be an amendment that the proposer would need to accept or would be asked to accept. And that is that we really approve page one as endorsed by the board and the other pages as reference, recommendations, suggestions. That what we really approve is the first page. That really has the level that we, as a board, should probably be in.
You set everything up into the proposed timeline and process? It's really more than one page?
Yeah.
No, that's the thing. The second page is, I think, a little too specific, but that's what I would suggest and we can amend the amendment to the friendly amendment.
You're going to get me on the parliamentarian process, but I would recommend not. We brought back the document we were asked to bring back. It's a proposed process with a suggested timeline. I think unless we give all of ourselves some deadlines, we'll be in the same position next year, the year and the year after.
How about if we approve the first page and give a deadline to when do we get a plan from the administration? That meets the guidelines of the first page.
Well, why don't you do that? I think it weakens, it weakens the proposal. I think it takes the pressure off.
I am, I'm hoping strongly that we can find common ground because I know this is very important to you, to all of us and that you all have worked very hard on it. So, I am just encouraging that we find a common place where we can land before we advance. Because I don't want, I don't think any of us want to. I think we want unity, okay? So, can we continue to seek that before I call a vote?
Yeah, Tammy too, I want to use an analogy. Sometimes I do a creativity exercise when I give kids pieces of paper and I ask them to build a tower and some of them cut the paper in half. And I go to them and I say, did I say that you can cut it in half? And the first thing they do is, you know, they lower their heads and then one of them raises their heads and say, you didn't say we can't. The first page, I see the first page as, this is, whatever you come back with, these are our guidelines, these are our principles. Everything on the second page, and granted, you do refer to them as we recommend, we propose and so on, but you don't want to restrict, I think. So, to me, I'm fine with approving the entire document, accepting the fact that the first page is what's mandatory and the other pages are reference.
I think even the language talks about suggested or recommended. And so, it's certainly my proposal, hopefully we can approve the entire document. It was done in concert with the direction that we were given. And I think it will motivate us to move and have the administration know that we're serious about this and we're serious about it now.
Can I have this?
I think I'd already added those.
I wasn't sure. We've talked so long, I wanted to make sure.
If I could propose a friendly amendment. Accepting the entire document with one, one item removed from. The sentence on the proposed process and timelines that's very directed, I'm just not a hundred percent comfortable with that conclusion being given to a committee that they might not feel they have freedom to operate. So, is there, I'm talking out loud a little bit here.
Yeah, and I understand your point. I think once again, though, if someone comes back and wants to do a coding academy for.
Then we want to prove that.
Yeah, and so I, and I think it's-
I think everybody in the room has heard the conversation and we're not going to get a coding academy.
Can we get a coding academy?
So, I think if that last sentence begins consequently, it is strongly recommended, if that's the huge heartburn. But as long as the statements that perceive that, that talk about, I mean, this is the area we're really worried about right now. It's doing systemic solution for these hypermobility issues. And everyone needs to get serious about that. And serious about providing services in areas where we've not provided services.
And I would support that. I am comfortable with the, with the idea stating in that the board coming in a document stating, this is an area of need that needs to be addressed. Where I, where my discomfort lies is saying consequently, here's the result we want you to achieve. And that's where I think we undermine the work of the committee if we provide them an answer in the, in the guiding principles. So, I'm certainly comfortable right now saying that there is a, the economically disadvantaged, non-limited English proficient students that we have a need that must, that needs to be met. I don't necessarily think that's solely in the southwestern quadrant, but I understand, you know, where you're coming from there. I'm just not comfortable with that, just stating, here's the answer.
So, my friendly amendment would be to approve the document absent that one sentence, starting with consequently.
With the knowledge that the timeline is a suggestion.
Is a suggestion, as it is presented. It is a suggestion. So, we would expect to hear feedback from the committee about their recommended timeline. Is that acceptable?
Yes, but the expectation I think the committee has is that we move briskly. This becomes a high priority. This is said in the same breath as anything we might do for an advanced industry academy for older students or fine arts.
Okay, so now we will vote on the amended motion. So, all in favor of the amended, of the amendment?
No, if it was a friendly amendment and the proposer accepted it, then we need to vote only on the amended original motion.
All right, thank you. So, we will now vote all in favor of the amended original motion. Please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Amen. We got that done.
It was harder than vouchers.
Move on.
Well, I just, it's an interesting flashback because five years ago to the day, we were actually at Sockwell and we were having to go through a rather contentious redistricting issue with 600 people glaring at us. And that was my daughter's 18th birthday. Today is her 23rd birthday, so happy birthday, Julia. We'll have tape when I get home.
What are the odds that she's watching?
Zero.
Will you come play back the tape?
And we were, as a board, in a very different place then than we are today. So, next is the new high school academy program. So, we'll do this the same way. Do we have a motion to accept the new high school academy program, guiding principles, proposed process and suggested timeline as presented?
So moved.
There's no timeline.
Okay.
There's process.
There's process. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, you have a question?
I just said there's no timeline.
There aren't dates.
Back to work.
Well, to clarify, if you want, it's just do it as soon as practical. We didn't put specific dates in because this is a framework, except that's fine.
And remember that this is a framework that would launch many academies potentially, many or many academy programs. So, this is a general guideline and just started.
So, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next item, our reports. At this time, Amy Bates, the Director of Special Projects, will present the current status of the Competitive Robotics Program. Ms. Bates?
Thank you all so much for having me tonight. I'm so excited to share with you all the progress of our competitive robotics program. And I'm here representing the work of about 400 kids to this point and 25 coaches who are bringing this year's challenge to life. So, we are working to build a program so that we have an engineering community within our town that connects our students with industry professionals and grows our kids into disciplined and creative thinkers who are not afraid to pursue big challenges. And some of these challenges are really big. So, First Robotics is a unique set of programs that brings together students, teachers and industry professionals. And when you look at the statistics that are provided by FIRST, you can see why this was the program of choice. So, students in FIRST are twice as likely to major in science and engineering. A third of those alums are females who choose to go into engineering. The students involved in the program reported increase in problem solving, time management and conflict resolution. They also report that they're more interested in going to college and they're more interested in taking challenging courses. And almost 80% of kids who have been in the program are students who are either majoring in or are pursuing STEM careers. So, to back up a little bit, FIRST is, and it is a nonprofit organization out of New Hampshire and FIRST stands for, for the inspiration and recognition of science and technology. It's founded by Dean Kamen. It's the same gentleman who invented the Segway. And as a, as a result of his fortune, he invested that money in students, which I think is a pretty marvelous thing. It's an international program. There are about 380,000 students involved in 42 countries. So, it has a huge amount of corporate sponsorship. Of the Fortune 500 companies, over 200 of them are sponsors of the program. And that large S has related into over $20 million worth of college scholarships available to students who participate in the programs. So, as a district, we're looking at three aspects of the program. The first is called First Lego League or FLL. And I wanted to bring you just a little snippet of what kids do in First Lego League. So, what we have there are, is a EV3 block that is powering that robot. The kids program the bot to do all kinds of things. What we saw, there was a little bit of line following, a little bit of gyroscopic motion. They use a variety of sensors and program that little bot to do a variety of tasks. And that all happens within 2 minutes and 30 seconds. The next program, oh, First Lego is for kids from fourth grade through eighth grade. The next program is FTC, which stands for First Tech Challenge. First Tech Challenge is a bot that's about the size of a toaster oven. And teams of kids work to build and program that robot. To me, it looks like the erector sets when I was a kid. Except these erector sets can do things that mine never could. So, here's a little snippet of what these bots look like in action. As you can tell, we have a little bit more music going on, a little bit more excitement in the crowd. And then that leads us to FRC Robotics, which is First Robotics Competition. And it's played by kids who are in between ninth and- And it's played by kids who are in between ninth and 12th grades. In these images, we're actually seeing some of our own teams. 5431 is from Academy High School and 6171 is from Plano Senior High. And here's a short clip of them in a match together at the Dallas Regional. One of the really neat aspects of all of these robotics competitions is this idea of coagretion and gracious professionalism. So the kids in the program realize that even though they have a competition, that competition is really against the challenge itself and not so much against the teams that they're playing with, which in turn creates this really helpful nurturing environment for kids. It's not unusual at all for one team to be in need of a part and another team to rush over and bring that part to them and help them create a better bot. So that's a, it's a really nice atmosphere for kids to kind of spread their wings and fly. These robots, by the way, are about 120 pounds. They travel at 12 feet per second and they are built within a six week window. Now, all of this magic is only possible with the help of industry mentors. And those mentors are willing to stand shoulder to shoulder with our kids to question, to prod, to teach. They do their level best to keep their hands away from the bot and help the kids do the work. And it's through that work, I feel, that that's how FIRST gets those statistics. It helps a kid to really realize, is this a path that they really want to, to, to go down? Is this something that they really want to consider? Conversely, it helps open their eyes to all the possibilities that are out there. These kids are also actively involved in our community. That's another one of the goals that FIRST prizes, is community involvement. So here we have kids from all of our teams. They, they visited eight different campuses this year. They participated in the community in a wide variety of events, including the Barnes and Noble Makers Fair. One team went out and threw out the first pitch at a Rough Riders game and talked to the people in the stands. They, both teams went out and worked at the Take Your Daughters and Sons to Work Day at Texas Instruments. They're involved in the community. In fact, we've got on Monday, when the rest of the kids have the day off school, we've got a group of kids going over to Flowserve to work with their family and friends on their special day. As a result of all of this hard work, we had three teams last year, actually three FLL teams and then the two FRC teams. Those teams participated at the Allen Qualifier, they went to the Tech Dallas and the Lone Star Regional Competitions. Our two FRC teams qualified for the World Championships. And they participated in a variety of offseason events, including the Texas Robotics Invitational and the UIL State Championship in Austin. We estimate that they were in front of at least 55,000 votes in the spring of last year. So our progress to date, we've grown from those three campuses, from Bowman Middle School, from the Academy High School and from Plano Senior High, to 20 campuses this year and 23 teams. All of our coaches have had training, their competition kits of parts are in place. We have industry professionals serving as mentors. We have folks from Flowserve, from Texas Instruments, from National Instruments, from Alliance Data, from Intel, just to name a few. Our hope is that we can host scrimmages and qualifying matches here in Plano. The reason that we want to do that is because we want our public to come out and see these robots on the field. We want them to see what it feels like to be in these events. And we want to encourage this community service aspect with our kids so that they're helping at these events, they're helping mentor younger kids, and they're working throughout the community and offering up their mentorship. One part of the FIRST program is teaching kids to be advocates for themselves and going out and making that ask. We want to nurture this entrepreneurial spirit within them so that they look at their robotics team as more of a small business. So with that in mind, each FLL team is seeking $125 in community support. Hopefully that's an ask that they can go to their principal, they can go to their PTA, they could go to Country Burger and say, here's this really great thing that I'm doing, could you help us meet our goal? Each FTC team, those bots that are about the size of a toaster oven, they're seeking $2850. But the really great news is that they've already received a grant for $750 and they're in line to receive grants of up to $8,000. That money is out there from those Fortune 500 companies who support these programs. And our FRC teams, they're the ones looking for the big ask. So they're currently pursuing grants and corporate sponsorships that together would total about $60,000. So taking a closer look at our FLL program, one team on a campus, which is what we have right now, with the exception of Memorial and Bowman, one team on a campus is budgeted at $1,700. Each additional team would be budgeted at $925. Now, there's a difference between being able to participate and having a Toyota Avalon to participate in. So there's a difference between getting out on the field and having all of the bells and whistles that you might possibly want. So optimal funding would, would increase that amount. So again, those rookie teams are seeking out $125, but a sponsorship to fully equip a, a set of three teams at a campus would be $4,900. Since those kits of parts are things that we can keep from year to year, a veteran team doesn't have as great a need for funding. So instead of $1,700, a veteran team costs us $1,225. Each additional team then costs $350. And like with anything, they would want a little bit of extra stuff to help those bots be better even the second year. They would still have that ask of $125 and a sponsor could equip, equip three veteran teams for 2075. So FTC, those are the larger bots. One team on a campus is budgeted at $5,200. Optimal funding would include a need for additional parts as well as the competition field and pieces. Rookie teams are seeking out that $2850 and again, those grants are going to come in handy there along with the capacity for those kids to go out, make a presentation and make an ask. So a sponsor could fully equip a rookie FTC team for a little over $8,000. And a veteran team, again, is going to cost us a little less because of the reusable nature of the parts. Now, the FRC bots, they're the big bots. They typically get welded together, so there's not a lot of reusable parts that can be stripped from a bot from year to year. Plus those kids take those robots out into our communities. So one team is budgeted at $11,750, that covers stipends and training for these, for these folks. A typical FRC coach is spending upwards of 300 hours with their teams outside of school time. We have a design for a supply depot for teams. To meet that six week window, it's helpful to have some parts and some equipment on hand instead of waiting for the, the procurement process. So the idea there is like a lending library. If a team borrows something, then their order return comes in and it's returned to that lending library. There's, there are grants out there for FRC teams. A typical rookie team can get between $10,000 and $20,000 of grants. These are not a blind grant kind of an application. These are FIRST specific grants that are out there and available for teams. Priorities for all of those grants are given to Title I schools and to schools that have teams that have students who have an additional financial need. So here's where our programs are today. So in placing teams, we looked at a nice geographic distribution along with including campuses that met all different types of demographic profiles. So the next five years, our goal is to have, have a robotics team of some variety on every campus by the 2021 school year. As you can see, we're adding about six elementary campuses a year, give or take, in the growth of the program. And right now, we have FLL and FTC both at middle schools. And this, since this is our first year and we're looking at how this works, we're checking to see with those teachers and those teams, what seems to be the best fit at middle school. And we'll know that after we, after we have a chance to experience it for a year. And we would like to see an FTC team at every nine, 10 campus and an FRC team at each 11, 12 campus as they are ready to do that. So this is an idea for the growth, but again, we want that growth to be organic. We want to be able to respond to the needs of a campus. And sometimes that response is having perhaps more than one team and sometimes that response is waiting until they have somebody in position to move forward. And here's that same information about growth, but shown with the dollar amounts attached. So you can see what we anticipate the budget ask would be for each year, plus what our fundraising goal would be for each year. And again, that fundraising goal is primarily the FRC teams. And it rapidly increases when we add additional FRC teams. And this is what we're looking at, at that full five-year-plus build out, once we have all 67 campuses with all veteran teams. So we know that we're going to have to have these three things in line in order for our program to continue to grow. We need to have strong internal support, thriving corporate partnerships, and, and mechanism to have both our higher, our high school students as well as our industry partners to continue to mentor our younger students.
I have a couple of questions. It looks like it's a lot of fun, first of all. On the grant writing process, so there are standing grants that are available from certain companies that are supportive of this kind of work, is what it sounds like? So who will be writing those grants? Will it go through the foundation with their grant writer? What's the expectation?
So we have, we have a little bit of both going on. The, the typical standing FIRST grant, those grants are primarily, they want, they want demographic information about your campus and they want information about your team. Typically, that's one paragraph or two that those grants want. It's not a standard grant that wants voluminous information. We are going for another grant, that's the Bell Helicopter Grant, and that's a grant that the Education Foundation is helping us with.
So is this grant opportunity, and I'm sorry if I missed this, is this something that we'll have to undertake every single year? So we do something for initial startup?
Right.
And then something for maintenance? If we don't get the maintenance part, but we've started up, are we looking at filling that gap from our budget?
Likely, but I honestly believe that if we ask people, if we ask corporations and they see the kind of work that we're doing, our experience has been that our corporate partners want to be there, they want to be in that space.
So I just think we're going to have to really coordinate with the foundation for those corporate partnerships so that they can, you know, always be on tap to help feed that pipeline.
Yes, and they have been outstanding partners in this process so far.
Okay, thanks.
To further Missy's questions a little bit, really, we'll, we'll be looking for four FIRST Robotics teams, so each of our high schools. So that's $80,000 in grants that we'll have to get every year from corporations. And so we just have to know that. I, I know it's probably considered unusual that me, as one of the engineers on the board, is questioning, but this, this is not inexpensive. We're actually making a pretty big strategic play going into robotics. It's, it'll be close to a half million dollars a year and, and serving a rather small set of students because each team is limited. Now, FIRST Robotics, you can have as many as you want, but they're not that many, you can't go to 50 and have people all doing great robotics jobs. So we just have to be very conscious.
Actually, we have 67 kids at Academy High School on the team.
Well, I guess I'm a little prejudiced. I want the ones doing real engineering, the ones who are doing the marketing, designing capes and those sorts of things, that's important, but that's not really, you know, getting into the guts of it. But I want to make sure we're, we're thoughtful about the total investment, but I also want to make sure we're thoughtful about, about the equity. I think if we can't have a team at all four of our senior high schools next year, we're letting down the kids in this district. With 3,000 kids at each of our senior highs, there ought to be at least 20 who are interested in doing robotics. And so we need to find, I guess, one educator on each campus who feels like-minded. The next question I have for equity is looking at our middle schools and with the FIRST Tech Challenge, if it's good for one middle school, that level of sophistication ought to be good for all of our middle schools. And so a plan that gets us out to 2021 with still only three middle schools being tapped to get the more sophisticated program, I struggle with. So I just would, would encourage the administration, as you look at the rollout, number one, we need to be thoughtful about the total dollar amount. But two, we also have to make sure we're looking at equity across our district.
Here's what I really like about this. We opened Academy High School with the idea of project-based learning and you've heard me rattle on enough about leveraging what we learned from that school and instruction and, uh, style of learning to leverage into other schools. This is an example of a way to do that. So I really, um, I like that. It's granted an after-school thing, but is a, it's a way that we're doing that. So, um, you know, Tammy's, you know, expressing it's expensive. I'm expressing I like that we're also giving some learning opportunities that are like real-life kinds of opportunities, um, on, on these campuses.
And I do think that there are quite a few, um, business, um, businesses that would like to participate. I know, you know, when we started the academy, there's one person in particular who had done quite a, quite a bit at some other, like elementary schools in particular. So I'm looking forward to, um, hearing how we're tapping into all those, um, people that really are available with time and with their businesses helping to support this program. I think we can do it, but I do think it is something that we do have to watch and I do agree with what Tammy was pointing out.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Just a five-year plan and beyond, I think it's the last three years. So let's look at 2021, 22. So the 244, 425 anticipated budget, is that for all teams across the district?
Yes.
And for, and that would cover 67 campuses, so we're talking about a camp, like team on every campus?
Yes.
And so then you've got, and I see, if I'm reading this right, the 244, 425 anticipated budget is the stipends and the travel. And then the one, the 111, 121 grant sponsorship, that is what you would use to eat into the 244 budget, correct? Or is that on top of?
It's in addition.
Okay, so to, I think to Tammy's point then, let's say we get no, no grants, no sponsorships, no fundraising, we're talking about $350,000 basically, 355 cost for robotics team on every campus.
And that wouldn't include the more sophisticated FTC team at all the middle schools? That would add about another $60,000.
Well, would that add, or is that already built into your budget?
To have an FTC team at each middle school, it is not. Again, we, we want to go back to our teachers and talk with them, what's the best fit for a middle school campus? We don't know that yet.
Yeah, I would say when Bowman started, you know, really almost on their own with support from some corporate sponsors, i- it's been FIRST Lego League that they did. Now, it doesn't mean, there may not be a conversion to FTC, but, um, you know, either one of those things can potentially serve, and you're right, I think we ought to hear what our teachers say. And Jim, we, part of this, we have, we have currently built in, into the operating budget a certain amount to get us right now up and running, correct?
Yes, yes, we have.
And, and that really is fairly close to that, that figure.
Yes.
Which would mean this would be a recurring operating budget, not beyond what we have now.
I thought for this year it was only 150,000.
Well, I can't remember the, the figure.
The, the amount will, will grow somewhat over the phase in, but I think kind of as Amy shows here, that, um, that ongoing cost really, uh, well, and yet you've got the numbers there. One, one of the things I'd like to address though too, is this, is the middle school piece about FLL and FTC. So, and, and I'd kind of like to give a shout out to Amy in terms of, because there's, besides the monetary cost, there's the human, human investment, the capital in terms of time and, and staff's time as well as volunteer time. So that's one of the things we want to study carefully and the reason that we haven't, it, it's not so much the, that we see the level of challenge is that different between FLL and the FTC. Yes, there is a difference, but it's also a difference in time commitment on the part of staff members, on the part of students. So we want to have
So we want to have options that address various levels of interest and need. And so that's why what you're seeing here is an idea. So we're not saying we're going to hold exactly to this plan. It gives you an idea, a really complete idea. This is a significant financial investment, and so we're upfront about that. But we do feel, I think as Amy pointed out, we feel confident that we'll get corporate support for this as it rolls out because it builds interest and momentum as part of the process.
Well, let me say this, and then, you know, you guys have heard me ram on a lot of things financially, but honestly, five hundred thousand dollars a year for something that is being used by thousands of kids within the district. We spend that much money on lots of things that benefit thousands of kids within the district. And so it's a return on investment. And you've got, you know, that is something that is, we're getting a lot of bang for our buck. That's exactly what you want to spend your money on. So I'm not suggesting that, that, I'm scared at all about that price tag. I would like to watch it, and I'd like to understand how the program is growing organically. You know, as you mentioned, that's the desire. But if what you get is a program that is built organically and is built by word of mouth, and you get a lot of kids who are excited about doing it, and you have sixty-seven campuses, each of them has a team with twenty kids on the team, I'd say you're getting a pretty good return on your investment there.
I would suggest twenty is pretty small. Some of them we have already started or well beyond that.
Yeah, I mean, even, you mentioned that the academy has sixty-something kids. I mean, that's fantastic. Those kids are getting, you know, it's a good opportunity.
That was going to be my question, was approximately, what is the average participation per campus?
So an FLL team is ten kids.
Okay.
One teacher can have more than one team, though. The difference would be in the yearly registration and event cost. To register an FLL team is two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So right now at Memorial, they have, they have two teams that are filled. At Bowman, they have three teams that are filled. The rest of the campuses are operating with one team this year to get their feet wet and to know what's happening. So those FRC teams, though, at Plano Senior, there are more than forty kids who have come out. And again, sixty-seven kids who have come out at Academy High School.
Okay, and then what would we do about capacity? If we had sixty children that wanted to participate and we only had two teams that are ten each, what, is there the opportunity for it to grow, or is there a limit to that?
There's not a limit as to how many you can have on a campus.
I guess I would ask about, in 2020 to 2021, you're talking about forty-four elementary FLL campuses? When do you think we can get to seventy campuses?
So in 2021 and 2022, that would give us all of our regular instructional campuses?
Not doing early childhoods.
So it's only four of the elementaries. We have forty-four.
Oh, the elementaries.
So Amy, the only other comment I might offer is along the way, you know, this five-year pathway, maybe there's some, I'm sure you probably have already thought about this, some success indicators? So before you go like large, all the way, before you go from one phase to the next, maybe thinking about what are the monikers, what are the yardsticks that you're looking at to know, hey, that's really doing what we wanted it to do before we go and spend more?
Well, I'll give you an example, and Jim or Amy, correct me if I'm right or wrong, but I'm doing this off memory, but one of the issues when we first engaged in this work at First Lego League, and we had a girls' team, a boys' team at Bowman, and then a mixed team. And part of that was we wanted to ask some of the kids, and the girls specifically, how many of them felt like they believed that they could have a career in STEM? And I believe it was fifteen percent prior to their experience in First Lego League. And following that experience, they were asked the same question, and eighty-six percent felt that that's something that they could do. So those are the kind of things that, you know, it's not only about, did you compete at the world championship? Did you go to college? There's a lot of things that you try to find out. And part of the reason we did what we did at Bowman was to see what's the difference when we have girls competing as a girls' team, a mixed team, because we wanted to understand, you know, was it having that kind of impact on young people who we think have potential to do anything they want with their life?
Yeah, I'd also want to just say, just to kind of remind us and compliment Amy for the work that she's done coordinating this, that we went from, so we're talking about being strategic but being cautious, too. But we've gone from three teams last year to twenty-three teams in just a few months, and that hasn't been without a lot of
Sure.
effort going on behind the scenes, so.
Well, we know Amy's good at-
We're proud of that work.
We know Amy's good at planning, you know, the passion and the brains behind all that curriculum work, leadership at the Academy High School. So thank you very much.
I just wanted to add one thing, and that is for us as a board, it's very important. It's an important program. Robotics is an area of growth, an area of the future. STEM is, we definitely celebrate everything STEM. Let's just remember there are other things, and let's make sure that we put passion behind other things as well. And I know that we do to some extent.
Please, I have to say, when we talk about our administration, we are caring, passionate, and have an intense desire to serve all of our children in Plano ISD. I just have to say that because the notion that we got to put something in place so that administration will carry that passion forward and try to serve children, we are very, very passionately committed to serving the young people in Plano ISD.
Understood that. I'm just saying there are other fields, other than robotics, that we need to keep in mind, such as psychology and other areas that I know, economics. I know that we don't typically see those presented here. I'd like to see more of that, too.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Jim Wusso, the Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services, on behalf of the Local Innovation Committee, is now going to prevent, prevent, present. Present the local innovation plan as developed by the committee. So this is in response to our District of Innovation work. Dr. Wusso.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure I heard the action verb that you described there.
I said prevent instead of present.
No, my intention's not to prevent. It's, so I'll say, on behalf of the Local Innovation Committee, I'm kind of maybe the de facto spokesperson, so I'm sharing this on behalf of the entire group. But again, you put in place a process that started last spring with the desire to investigate becoming a District of Innovation. And so really, so one of the things I'll remind you, you've got in front of you the latest draft, and this one has the, all the elements as well as the committee's signature. So there's a thirteen-member Local Innovation Committee that you created as part of your action. And so my purpose tonight really is to kind of share with you the timeline that we've created. So one of the things that we found, we got into this work, and this was really looking at notes from some of the conversations you presented and had as a board, that we wanted to be aggressive with the timeline, and we wanted to kind of move this process forward as quickly and expeditiously as possible. So one of the things I want to share with you, we're about three, I'd say roughly three-quarters of the way through this process in terms of a timeline process. And actually, the timeline that we're presenting today is a little bit more aggressive than we had first thought from the board. So you have the official draft in front of you. There's no action needed from the board today in regards to this, but one of the other action items, there's actually a thirty-day posting period that starts. It's our intent. We've already got things in place to post that either possibly later tonight or tomorrow. The draft plan will be posted prominently on the district website. One of the other things that we have to do then is notify the commissioners. So there's a form that we have to complete as well. But again, from the next two important dates, one is we hold a public hearing during that thirty-day, or after that thirty-day posting. So that public hearing is scheduled for November the seventh, Monday, November the seventh, five p.m. here in the boardroom. And at that time, that's when the advisory committee will take kind of final action on, based on input on the final draft. And then our proposal is to present that to you as a board for action at the November the fifteenth board meeting. And that's what the letter that we'll send to the commissioner will suggest that board, it's the intent of the board to take potential action on this at the November fifteenth board meeting. So as you look at the draft, and you've had a chance to see this, you've got a written copy in front of you as well. There are no surprises in the elements that we're asking for exemption. One thing, though, that I do, I think is worth noting, especially in light of possibly some of the conversations happening in pre-legislative session about potential changes to this, one of the things, so in addition to accelerating this timeline and we're bringing this forward in November rather than December, if you look at the term, which is on the first page there, we're recommending, or part of the proposal is to have this go into effect January first of seventeen. So it's mid-year and a school year, and we don't see any potential downside to doing that, but it puts us on firmer ground to take these actions forward, even starting this school, impacting this school year.
I have a question about that. Will we be required to amend policy? And if that's the case, how is that going to impact the timeline? Because some of these things are going to impact policy. That might be a question for Carla.
I would say depending on how this process goes in regard to the submission, certainly we'd be preparing all the policies that may be affected, but I would say not before we had a final decision moving forward.
Okay. I mean, that's a good question. I think we should probably ask TASB because we're really exempting ourselves from TEC, from the Education Code.
In some places, not everywhere.
Well, every place.
If we look at the documents that kind of guide our work as a committee, it is our responsibility to make sure that we amend local policies to be. So we've thought about that, and there are different ways to approach that. So that would be, that would be part of an aggressive timeline as well, to kind of identify what policies those are and make appropriate adjustments.
I would say that's part of the charge, and we would also use our resources with TASB as well for that. But we would be on the hunt locally to get all that done.
I wonder if there's some kind of blanket way to do it, or if you have to go to each, each single policy. You know, I wonder how the other districts did it. I'm sure you'll point out.
We will.
Okay, any other comments where this is not an action item, just for information only?
I just wanted to say I went through this, and it's very thorough. I mean, I like the format. I like the thought process that went into that. It was, if you remember, one of the things that we were concerned with is that we don't just make a list of things we want to be exempt from, but start with what is it we want to achieve, and so this document achieved that. Great work.
Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item. Dr. Dash Wersinga, Executive Director of Assessment and Accountability, will present the committee's report for the 2016-17 school year. So this is the report from the District-Based Improvement Committee. It is informational only. And this report, it provides the framework for the site-based improvement committee work at each campus. Dr. Dash.
Thank you. Well, President, would have fastest evening. As, this is something that we do annually, and this is covered under Texas Education Code, Chapter eleven, Section two fifty-one and two fifty-two. And the, just to summarize what DBIC is, it is required, there are nine things that are required to do on the education code, and the key things are preparing the improvement plans for the district and each of the campuses, preparing college readiness plans, professional development plans. Those are like the three big items that the DBIC kind of studies and reports on. So what is the DBIC? Maybe say a little bit about it. It's a committee of thirty people. Two-thirds of them are required to be classroom teachers, and they are elected from elementary, middle, and high schools. They serve three-year terms, so we kind of elect a third every year. And there are principals, district staff, community members. Special ed education representation is required, and children with disabilities, so that those students' issues are also addressed. So one thing, because of the delay in receiving star results, normally we prepare the DBIC report at the end of the school year, so that it is ready to go at the very beginning. Well, we had our four meetings last year, but we didn't get any star results. So we, so that was kind of, the process of reviewing the report was a little bit changed on the cycle. So yesterday at our very first DBIC meeting, we formally approved this report as the 2015-2016 report. The one thing that we decided to do last year is we really don't want to report, this is something we are new that we are doing every year. Just like we ask our campuses to have multi-year, long-term plans, that's kind of the same process that we have kind of adapted for the district-level plan. So at this meeting, we had reports from, we had an accountability report, kind of a summary of what we did last year. We had a report, Susan Mahdi presented a report on learning plans, on emotional learning and wide range. We study our commitment to equity plans. Then that's now, that is really a very broad plan that covers most of the work of the DBIC. So, and one thing that we, an additional thing we did last year is, if things look familiar, is because a lot of the plans and the report remain the same, is we aligned our DBIC actions with the strategic plan outcome indicators and those statements. So these are the ones that we are following for the, through our multi-year plan. So student proficiency, achievement gaps, and student growth, they are pretty much coming from the statewide requirements. Opportunity gaps are addressed through commitment to equity and other district-wide plans. And our professional development plan is a key component of that, is instructional coaching. The, so you heard some of these things from commitment to equity plans, so I can skip through that. And the key idea behind is, of the DBIC also, is college readiness. So dropout prevention is a major portion of that, and in fact, we are pretty good at that, retaining our students. The SAT, ACT, AP participation is another one of our long-term plans, and it is also in the strategic plan outcome indicators, subtracting those indicators down. The, there is, just to say, if you ask me, mention what is being addressed in any one of these, it's, most of these items are addressed through multiple areas and multiple plans. So there's, there is no one specific plan that is taking care of each, any one of them. So it's kind of a broad plan that we have. So for example, at our high schools, we are requiring that they maintain certain graduation rates, certain participation rates on SAT, ACT, and AP participation is in there, and that's locally. Then some of these are also monitored through the statewide accountability system. At the middle school level, we also monitor the dropout rate. The honors participation and students taking- The honors participation and students taking 912 credit are also monitored. So quickly, that is the, the, it's not, this is the report. So, and you all have, longer version of this is posted on the district website, and once, we are required, once this plan is presented to the board, to post it on the, make it public. So this will go on the PISD website, under awards and ratings, under district improvement committees, this will go as the formal report for 15-16 school year.
Any questions from board members? Thank you, Dash.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Dash, could I ask one quick question?
Sure.
And this may be a Mr. Fortenberry question, I'm not sure. Do we pay for ACT or SAT at any level for kids to take?
That's, so usually I'll let Dash ask.
Okay.
So we, we get, there are multiple ways of getting, especially for economically disadvantaged students. SAT and ACT themselves give waivers. Then they have a plan through TEA to give waivers also. And then, if we can't cover the students through those avenues because there's kind of a limited quota, then the districts, the schools have kind of a fund to offer some waivers too. So if, I don't think we have denied, or we haven't had funds to pay for a student that can go.
Okay. So academically disadvantaged does not preclude the participation rate? It's not what's keeping it from advancing?
As, if it is the funding part of it, it's, that's, it's not necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dash. At most of our regular meetings, we have policies on the agenda for the board's consideration. These policies have undergone prior review by the district's attorney and by each board member. I invite Carla Oliver to introduce these policies. Ms. Oliver?
Thank you, President Wender. First, we'll look at TASB Localized Policy Manual Update 105, which affects local policies. And this is actually presented to you for adoption under second reading tonight.
Do I have a motion to adopt item A on second reading?
I move that the board add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Service, and according to the instruction sheet for Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update 105 with revisions, is noted to the following policies. BJCF local superintendent non-renewal and DFBB local term contracts non-renewal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item B.
Policy BDAA local officers and officials duties and requirements of board officers. This policy is presented for adoption under second reading and does reflect a couple of edits, so I appreciate the study period that you've had.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt item B on second reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second? May I have one seconded? Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item C, please.
Thank you. FMH local student activities regarding commencement. This policy is presented for approval under first reading and will be presented for adoption under second reading at another meeting. These were actually just attorney recommendations on these changes, for simplicity.
Do I have a motion to approve item C on first reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item D, please.
Thank you. You're probably way ahead of me on this, but I wanted to let you know that both D and E reflect the same kind of revisions to two separate policies for different reasons, but if you're thinking you're seeing the same thing twice, you are. So technology resources and, which is CQ Exhibit D, and for E, again needing two votes, FL Exhibit D, student records are presented for review under first reading and will be presented for, and will be presented under second reading at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, so item D is simply a motion to review, right? Yes, because it's an exhibit.
It is, yes, it's presented for review.
Both of them. So we'll do D first. Do I have a motion to review item D on first reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item E.
Thank you. Item E was actually the FL Exhibit to be voted on.
Okay, so it's the same exhibit, just to a different policy?
Exactly.
So do I have a motion to review item E on first reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item F.
GKA local community relations in regard to conduct on school premises. This policy is presented for approval under first reading and will be presented for adoption under second reading at a subsequent meeting.
Do I have a motion to approve item F on first reading?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm already teetered.
I already knew she had discussion coming.
Yeah.
Go ahead, just talk.
Okay, so I'm curious, I think it'd be nice for the board to know why this has been suggested. Could somebody explain why this has been suggested, please, so they know?
Sure. Every year, we have multiple situations where principals contact either our department or Joe's, where a situation arises, parent either is walking to pick up a student or dropping off a student and has a dog on a leash or in a carpool line when a safety patrol student opens the door. And we have had only one student that's actually been bitten, but every year we run into this, and the principals ask the parent if they would please not bring the dog back, and usually that happens, but in cases where it doesn't, we've really been pressed to show me where that is in policy. And we certainly are open to, obviously this is first reading, to hear your feedback on it. I will give you some background. Part of what we were trying not to do is put principals in a situation where they had to determine, well, is your dog unruly? Okay, you can bring it, but this person can't. So that's the background on it.
So of course, being who I am and the business I'm in with my husband, I decided to research this because I just was really curious what other districts do. And I looked at 10 other school districts, and there's no specific policy like we're proposing right now that I could find. I looked at Austin ISD, Houston, San Antonio, Richardson, Frisco, Allen, McKinney, Dallas, Arlington, and Fort Worth. What I did find was, I guess, guidelines, I don't know how else to state it, but there were guidelines like from Frisco, says dogs are not allowed on school property during school hours and are not allowed on tracks. If you have your pets on school grounds after hours, please be respectful and adhere to city ordinances regarding leashes and picking up waste. That was, same sentiment basically was repeated on the Houston ISD website. McKinney, it appears, doesn't have any guidelines like that because they have one principal that has dog bones in his, you know, or treats, however you want to call it, in his jacket and hands them out every morning when families come walking their dogs to school. My concern, I did post this on a group in, on Facebook, a group of moms in Murphy, and some of the concerns that were raised, one in particular by a city council member, is in Murphy, our parks and our schools share, you know, common ground, and so when people want to go walk their dogs to the park, they're often, you know, cutting across the school grounds. So the way that this suggestions worded, I just don't see how it can be enforced. Also, I had other people that were complaining about, you're going to tell me who or what I can have in my car. So I understand, you know, putting somewhere guidelines, you know, that not to have, that were more like Frisco's, not having the dogs on campus or pets, whatever, but to say you can't have it in a car, I really think that this needs to be tweaked, and I don't know if it really needs to be a policy. I think, you know, there should, there can be a guideline like Frisco and Houston has. I mean, I really dug, and I just couldn't, most of the time when I would do the search field, dogs on campus, it was watch dogs. So I was like, well, this isn't helping me, so I was trying to come up with other words, but I just could not easily find, you know, on most of the districts, a prohibition period.
One thing that bothered me about the language is that, like Carolyn mentioned, you know, we have city parks that occupy our schools, and so somebody who is out walking their dog at 9:00 o'clock at night is, could potentially be in violation of this policy because they walk along the sidewalk. So I think the language could probably be tightened up. The second thing, though, however, the reason behind this, I fully support having a policy that says this, because if people are bringing their dogs and their dogs are biting kids, under the law, there's no such thing as one free bite. So I would ask, are we, are we reporting those incidences to police? Are we, what are we doing with, when a kid is bitten by an animal? Because certainly, there needs to be consequences for the owner of that dog.
By law, you are supposed to, period. I know that. You're reporting to animal control.
So if we're not doing that, perhaps that needs to also be placed in policy.
May I add one piece to your discussion, and then I'll back away? I do think that our staff is asking for help, to have something that gives them an opportunity to have a very critical conversation if there is an incident that happens. We are in a time of review for this particular policy, and we could look at the language and come up maybe with some other pieces to that. Again, I don't think everyone that has a pet is going to be an offender of such a policy, but I think it does give us the opportunity to hear what you're saying, maybe work on the verbiage a bit. I would just encourage you to know that it was asked, we've been asked for help. So not to disregard your conversation, and very respectfully, I would just say maybe we can find a good solution within policy, but still possibly have a policy or a guideline.
Would there be a good battleground where, right now, we don't have anything? So right now, when school staff says, you know, don't bring that dog, and somebody asks, where did you get that, where is that policy? How about if we stated something to the extent that we leave that to the school staff discretion based on danger, risk, or something like this, and then that would be the place in policy that says, we have the discretion to say, don't bring your dog again.
That is an option to consider. I will say that that, I think that puts our principals in a very vulnerable situation when dealing with their parents. It's not that we can't do that, and maybe in other occasions we do. I don't think it offers the most support that's been offered, because it does put them sort of on a hot seat.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think our principals would be more comfortable having a guideline that, rather, if you're uncomfortable with the policy, some amended language. I would echo, I think the principals would be uncomfortable with a parent who's already, and, you know, vast majority of the time, this isn't an issue, but it's kind of like David said, there's no free bite, so we're trying to avoid having that. So when there is pushback and someone says, well, show me in policy, what's in policy is it's at the principal's discretion, it leaves them still, I think, without good support.
I can already see the grievance of, well, the principal let one dog get away with a bite, not my dog, so I'm fully supportive of putting it as a policy, honestly. I think that it does give the principals and staff something that they can fall back on.
Some teeth.
Some teeth, exactly.
The only thing, so all I want to say about dog bites, by law, it doesn't matter if your dog bit you, you're supposed to report it.
They are.
I mean, that's just how it is, period. My, I think, my biggest question, or my question really is, would we be the only one of the, over 1,000 districts that have a policy against, so specifically, you know, implanted, whatever, versus what I was seeing, which was guidelines? I don't know, there has to be a reason for it, I would think, but...
Those are great comments for us to go back. We'll do some more work to answer that question, Carolyn, and come back with either revised language for policy or revised language for guidelines. Is that...
Yeah, I would just add to Susan's comments that I can't put one district's policies against ours in the other because I haven't done that deep research. I will tell you that in one of my previous districts, we did have this very issue come up. It was not pleasant, and the first place we had to turn was to policy. So again, not that that trumps anything that we've had over the conversation tonight, but it does, I think, give rise to the need for more research, because I know we're not the only ones dealing with that issue, and it's been, it's been difficult.
Carolyn, was the issue that it's before and after as well as during school hours?
Before and after was an issue, and...
If it was an hour before...
I just don't think you can tell people they can't have a dog or a cat or whatever in their car.
Tiger.
Or a guinea pig. I mean, I really, I, I think that's kind of going over...
Okay, so what will happen is, we'll take a vote on this, we have a motion, we have a second, but this does not make it policy, okay? This just gives them, this just moves them to the next step. And in between the first reading and the second reading, then they'll do some homework and come back at the second reading with some suggested language. So don't feel like when we're voting on this, you're saying, I buy into what is here. Is that fair to say?
So if they make changes, would it be submitted again for first reading, or that would be a second reading?
It would be a second reading, but again, you have the ability to choose to pass that or not.
Try and...
Approval.
Yeah.
We're breaking ground.
Okay. All right, so now we're going to vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item G, last item.
Thank you. CDA local other revenues investments. This policy is presented for adoption under first and final reading. I will admit a hiccup to you all in regard to policy. With this revision tonight, the maximum maturity date of any individual investment is increased from two years to three years. That particular edit was actually omitted from the September submission of this policy, so we're just self-correcting that.
Okay, so this is offered for adoption on first and final reading.
Correct.
So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion passes unanimously. So Carla, just to confirm, no comment cards?
Thank you, no, we do not have any.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.